Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. The time is now 6:27 PM. We apologize for being a little bit late. We were finishing an executive session upstairs. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real-time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. I'd like to now invite anyone who is able and willing to join me in a moment of silence, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. If you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everyone. Next up is item number three, Meeting Minutes. So that I'm going to be assisted by Vice Mayor Keating. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I move we approve item 3A1.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Keating and seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Please vote. And that's not updated. Oh, there we go. Bam. Yeah, we're getting used to this being back in person stuff over here, so. I'll just take yours. All right, so, Councilmember DeVar. Okay. And that motion passes seven to zero. Next up is item 3AB, Acceptance of Board Commission and Committee Meeting Minutes. Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I move we approve item 3B, 1 through 16.
Okay. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Keating. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Please vote. And that motion passes seven to zero. Next up is items 4A, Reports and Announcements. And I actually have a couple, and I'm going to come down here. Jason, right to the front here. Okay. Actually, if the council could join me, that would be fantastic. I'm still used to the old podium bag here. You know, I'm still getting used to this. All right. Well, wanted to say I am very honored to be able to have the opportunity to do this with the entire council. And just for a moment of kind of a brief personal privilege, I've known Dr. Shereen Lerner for a number of years. She's become a very close, personal friend. And obviously, that much so to so many other people here in the audience. She has her family here, some in town, some who came in from out of town, many of folks who she went through Tempe leadership with, and other people whose lives she's obviously touched during her tenure here in the city of Tempe. She's a remarkable human being, just an incredible bastion of integrity, and someone who I know everyone standing up here just values more than we could probably ever express. So we just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done for the city of Tempe. Most recently, I know, serving on the Independent Redistricting Commission, so not just for Tempe, but frankly, for our state. And yes, you deserved combat pay for that work, and you did an exceptional job. That is definitely for sure. So I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Lerner for being here this evening. I know the entire council wants to thank you. And so if you wouldn't mind joining me up here. Excellent. I will go ahead and read. Whereas Tempe resident Shereen Lerner has been a longtime community leader, serving on over 10 boards and commissions, including as Chair of the Tempe Desert Conservation Commission and Vice Chair of the Parks, Recreation, Golf, and Double Butte Cemetery and Historical Museum Advisory Board. And whereas Shereen was a member of Tempe Leadership Class 30, considered by some to be the best class ever, and now serves as the President of the Tempe Leadership Council. And whereas in her service of the 2021 Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission, she worked tirelessly to give a voice to communities across Arizona and fight for equitable representation, as well as actively participating in public service in her community. And whereas her understanding of equity and dedication as an Arizona Independent Redistricting Commissioner directly resulted in more competitive and fair maps for the state of Arizona. And whereas she is known to listen to concerns and strive to learn as much as she can about every corner of the state, and holds herself to the highest ethical standards in every action she takes. And whereas the city of Tempe appreciates and acknowledges Shereen Lerner's principled service and hard work on behalf of the residents of Tempe and the state of Arizona. Now therefore, I, Cory D. Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare March 3, 2022, as Shereen Lerner Day in Tempe, Arizona.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Get some photos.
Please, please, yes. Here you go. No, most of them.
I just want to say thank you to Mayor Woods and all the members of the city council. It's so nice to have. I know all of you as well, and I consider you friends, and I appreciate the incredible honor and your faith and trust in me in being an active member of the community. So I'm very grateful to you. I've been really lucky to have lived in Tempe and Arizona for 45 years, which dates me. But during that time, I've had the opportunity to volunteer and participate in many organizations from archaeology and historic preservation, Tempe leadership, human services, and political issues pertaining to equity, including redistricting, voting rights, and women's issues. I first volunteered in Tempe as Chair of a task force to create historic preservation ordinance for the city. To date me again, I was appointed by Mayor Harry Mitchell, and reappointed by Mayor Neil Giuliano, so you can know how long ago that was. Since then, many people have given me opportunities to serve when I've sought ways to contribute to the community, and I can't name them all or we'd be here all night, including many of you who are right here on the city council itself. But I do want to thank Councilwoman Kubi for introducing me to the Tempe Community Council that got me started in my efforts in human services, and to Mayor Woods for giving me the opportunity to serve on the Public Safety Task Force, which gave me a chance to apply what I teach in the real world. Gandhi said that the best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others. I've been inspired by people who've shown me the value of stepping forward, and I see many of my friends -- sorry, I'm emotional. I see many of my friends here tonight who've done the same, and we truly live in a great Finally, I want to thank my family. Excuse me. Didn't think I'd be emotional. I want to thank my family, my husband, Rob, my children, Alyssa and Ben, who flew in to celebrate. I'm really grateful for that. I don't get to see them that often, so this was a really nice treat for me. And my parents for the example of service that they showed me. I'm grateful for all of you, so thank you.
Love to see if we could get Dr. you and your family to come up and take some photos as well before we.
Congratulations.
And I have a Bike Month proclamation as well. And once again, I just want to say before we stop here, I'm so glad that this was our first meeting back in person, that we were able to recognize you, Dr. Lerner. I mean, we wanted to make sure that we did this at a point where we actually could do it, not in some kind of virtual WebEx format, but in person where we could actually see and hug one another, so so glad you're here. So my next presentation here is our Bike Month proclamation, and I'll quickly read this. Whereas Tempe will hold its 28th Annual Bike-to-Work Day event on April 20 to celebrate biking in the community and encourage bicycling as an alternative mode of transportation. And whereas Tempe has more than 217 miles of bikeways, including on-street bike lanes, multi-use paths, protected and buffered bike lanes. And whereas Tempe is designated a gold-level bicycle-friendly community by the League of American Bicyclists for providing comfortable and convenient bike facilities such as multi-use paths, protected bike lanes, and bicycle bridges. And whereas, with the support of our community partners, including Arizona State University and the Tempe Bicycle Action Group, Tempe is well on its way to becoming one of the leading bike communities in the country. And whereas having a strong bicycle culture is good for individuals, communities, and the environment. It improves our health, strengthens neighborhoods, contributes to a vibrant business economy, attracts quality employers and workers, reduces carbon emissions, and improves our quality of life. Now therefore, I, Cory D. Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare April 2022 as Bike Month in Tempe, Arizona. All right. Next up is item number three. That's actually not item three. It's my third announcement, actually. City of Tempe Commission Appointments. Just wanted to report that there are new appointments to the city's Historic Preservation Commission and Veterans Commission as outlined in item 6A1 on the agenda this evening. Next up, we have City Managers Reports and Announcements. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council have three reports tonight that I think you'll find informative. First, Street Maintenance and Pavement Quality Index Presentation.
Thank you for allowing me to present this evening on PQI and how our streets program maintenance play a critical role in moving the needle forward towards the 70 PQI. I also want to take a brief second to give thanks and appreciate the work that Mr. Ed Bond has done, our pavement engineer, who continues to do extraordinary work within our capital pavement management program. Next slide, please. Performance Measure 1.22. Pavement Quality Index falls under the Safe and Secure Communities Council strategic priorities. Pavement in our industry is primarily measured in numerical measures and basically is scored on a level of 0 to 100. The goal of this performance is to achieve adopted standards for pavement quality index and is equal to the citywide average rating of 70 or higher across all demographic categories. Next slide, please. This evening, I'm going to talk a little bit about our strategies. We have three main strategies to increase our pavement quality index to 70. First and foremost, we collect pavement performance data on every street in the city of Tempe every three years. We then use this data to develop a five-year capital reinvestment pavement program. This data shapes the program and determines what we repave, where we repave, and the type of resurfacing that is performed. Lastly, and what tonight's presentation will focus on, is how proper maintenance is performed on our pavement in order to ensure that we get the service life we expect out of our pavement. This includes performing preventative maintenance such as crack sealing, seal coating, patching, and making sure that our pavement is in good standing condition. As you could see on the pictures below, our fine gentlemen in streets operations are crack sealing, seal coating, and patching. One of my favorite slides that I always love to share to the community as well as the council is the preventative maintenance curve. So to go a little further into the preventative maintenance aspect, let's discuss the way pavement performs, and the performance is generalized by this chart. The deterioration curve chart shown illustrates why it is so important to preserve good roads. The curve shows that when the pavement is in good condition, it is the least expensive to maintain, similar to a new car. As the pavement gets older, the condition decreases, and the cost to keep the pavement in a drivable condition increases. Therefore, it is so important to ensure that we keep our good streets in good condition by performing the adequate maintenance activities such as the crack sealing, the seal coating, and the minor asphalt patching. Performing the maintenance early on in the pavement life substantially lowers our ownership costs of the pavement network. So assuring that we live on the left-hand side of the chart at the top is the key for the city of Tempe to make sure that we're adequately maintaining our streets in excellent and good condition. In terms of street maintenance goals, I would like to provide you with a quick glimpse of our work activities and our current performance goals that have a positive impact within the residential neighborhood streets. On a month-to-month basis, we strive to reach these goals to maintain and in some cases increase our PQI score. All of these maintenance goals listed here are in line with our strategy to focus our preventative maintenance efforts within the neighborhood streets while not overlooking our arterial and collector streets. As you can see, our crack seal and street sweeping programs identified in green are reaching our targets. As for the other three programs in blue, we are working diligently to get caught up in those areas. The pothole patch target of 200 a month will be reached once we are fully staffed. We are also anticipating an increase in dollars within the seal code operating program that will allow us to achieve the 50,000 gallons per month target. In terms of performance goals and calls that we received on a daily basis, all 641 pothole calls received in 2021 have been addressed. However, the final asphalt patch replacements after a pothole is temporarily filled is an ongoing process for us. As we move toward increasing our PQI score collectively, we will have more pavement in good condition that will need to be maintained early on in its pavement life. As this happens, this will allow us to move toward proactive work instead of reactive work, and will have reduced number of pavement patches and can get to all of them in a timely manner. Finally, on behalf of our streets team, we would like to thank you, Mayor, and council for the great strides you all have made last year in helping us move the needle in a positive direction. And even though you may not see those differences just yet, we will see the PQI numbers move in the direction of our 70 PQI target. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Isaac, for the presentation. I really appreciate it. Good job. Just, I know you mentioned about vacancies and that you're not fully staffed yet. Just can you describe like how when you're anticipating it'd be fully staffed?
We're hoping that by the end of the fiscal year, we should have all of our equipment operator two positions filled.
Okay. Is there anything council can do to help you with that?
Again, council and mayor, you guys have done amazing job thus far with the pavement program in terms of funding it. So we're heading in the right direction in terms of moving that needle forward and making sure we're getting to that 70 PQI target.
And with the increase in financial support for you, are we able to move our timelines up as far as getting our streets repaved?
The PQI currently sits, and I think most council, you guys have seen the PQI scores, our material are sitting at about a 69 PQI, right? And our neighborhoods are the areas that we're strategically focusing on, and we're making sure that the funding collectively is being introduced in these neighborhoods to make sure that we're able to move that needle forward.
Okay. So I know the pavement is something that comes up a lot when I'm out and about, so I just want to, you know, know that I support you, and we support you, and keep our streets even in better condition. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Isaac. Any other questions, comments? Oh, Councilmember Kubi?
Hi, Isaac. I don't want to put you on the spot, and perhaps this is for a Friday packet, but I would love to hear about the innovative materials and technologies that you're studying, that you're starting to implement. I know there's, I don't know if we've explored the idea of crushed recycled glass. It's called cullet, I guess. Cullet? Does that sound familiar?
Not familiar.
Glass fault. It's also called glass fault, but it's used as filler material and is a great way to, you know, upcycle glass and recycle glass. And I'm wondering if there's other treatments and innovations that you could tell us, if not tonight, but in a Friday packet?
We can, Councilmember, we can certainly put a packet together, and we have been working with ASU and other municipalities to make sure that we're strategic in delivering these types of pavements. And our pavement engineers also on the call if there's any other questions, technical questions related to that.
They have been on webinars. I know you're studying cool pavement, the idea of cool pavement as well, and you and Phoenix are studying that, or the city of Tempe. You're not the city of Tempe, but I think of you that way. So there's a lot of technology that's advancing, cool pavement technologies as well, right?
We definitely are looking forward to be able to test that product and see what it's doing. Obviously, city of Phoenix has taken the lead on it, and we're certainly working very closely with them as well as with ASU to see, you know, what results we get from that.
Thank you.
For the record, I just like the term "glass fault," so. Councilmember Adams?
Just to follow up on that, I do, you know, I know that Phoenix has had this pavement down now for a while, but yes. Do you know when you're going to get results that we'd be able to determine moving forward with it?
I do have our pavement engineer on the line that can certainly speak to that in terms of where we're at with results.
Okay. I'd love that. It's so important. It's a good project.
Sounds good. Anyone else need further comments, questions, or?
What? Ed Bond, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
No.
I think bad.
No, not. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Now it can't.
Okay. Good evening. This is Ed Bond with Transportation Maintenance. So we are still awaiting final report from the city of Phoenix and ASU regarding the cool pavement that was placed. So we are anticipating probably seeing those reports within the next, I would imagine, six months or so. So along the lines of that, we will report back on cool pavement as well as our efforts to apply those types of pavements in the city of Tempe.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other further comments or questions from council? All right, Isaac, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. All right, next up, item, looks like we have a presentation, Mr. City Manager, on the Clark Park Pool and Park Improvements?
That is correct.
All right.
Sean Wagner is here.
Sean?
How's it going?
Good. What's going on?
It is great to see all of you.
It'd be even greater to see more of you at the pickleball court sometime, so.
Wow!
I heard you were there, Councilmember Kubi.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, good evening. My name's Sean Wagner, and I'm here tonight representing the Community Services Department to provide council an update on the Clark Park Improvements. Next. As with all of our projects, we really strive to make sure that they're aligning with our strategic priorities. And so with that, while we feel this one touches on quite a few of those, we really feel it focuses in on our quality of life, 3.16 and 3.17, which really get at the core of our quality of recreation and cultural centers, as well as the quality of our community services programs. Next. So tonight, I'll be going through fairly quickly, just providing you an update on the Clark Park project, but these are the elements I'll be discussing tonight, and then at the end, there'll be an opportunity for questions or comments. But if something comes up along the way for you to get my attention, I'll be happy to stop and answer it for you. Next. All right, so back in 2021, I was down here, and, or no, we were online probably, back in 2021, but I was able to provide you a conceptual design, and you'll see that on the left of the slide here. Now we have a completed construction design, which you'll see on the right, and you'll notice there's been a few shifts with some of the elements, but we really feel that this is really going to contribute towards the activity and the activation of this park moving forward. The most significant shift you'll see was the community garden. It was previously up in the northeast corner, and now it's a little bit more centrally located, just above the playground, but we'll go to the next slide, and you'll see why here. So these are just some conceptual pictures of the community garden. I want to let you know we've worked with the Clark Park Garden Committee and their leadership, and they've been truly a blessing in that they've been able to provide us comments and direction on how they see not only this garden today, but how they see it growing moving forward. So we're truly excited about that. We're going to be relocating some of the shade structures that are currently out there as well as reusing the existing shade structure that's over the playground, which is the new garden area. So we're really talking about repurposing, reusing existing amenities within the park. But as you'll see, we've still got an opportunity for individual garden plots here, as well as a pollinator garden, storage for their maintenance tools, those types of things. But we recently had a meeting with them within the last couple of weeks, and they've done some fundraising on their own, so we're going to stub out some electric, pour the concrete pad, and they're going to have an opportunity to expand their CSA program, the Community Supported Agriculture Program. So truly excited about that as well. Moving on to playgrounds and ramadas and paths, we have an opportunity here to just look at the playground, and I like to call it the heart of the park. So this is that opportunity to just gather that community internal to the park, but the garden is just north of it. So there's that integration between the garden and the play. You'll also notice that we've got connections now throughout the park with our multi-use paths, which currently don't exist. We're working with community arts and public art on the playground surfacing, and that'll be artist-inspired and designed with that playground, in addition to the playground, the ramada and shade structures. Those will, you'll see, will be able to serve not only playground, but we're going to relocate one that will better serve the basketball courts, volleyball courts, as well as being able to service the south side of the playground. Next. The community center and the pool. We'll start with the pool here. Back in the conceptual work plan, we really heard community pool, and that means multi-generational. So you'll see those elements throughout the design of this pool. We've got a zillow depth entry, and in that area, we've got splash play elements. It's really going to engage those folks that are maybe not comfortable going into the deep end, but they want to get wet and they want to splash around and have a good time, this is where they'll be. In many cases, that's some of our tops. So you'll notice we have shaded seating on the deck, and that's for those parents. It may not quite want to get wet, but keep an eye on the little ones. So we've incorporated that there as well, too. As you progress into the pool, this is that opportunity for not only that recreational play, but swim lessons, other swim activities that we're going to be able to have there, water fitness, all those fun things will be able to take place there. And then on the very end of the pool, we've got a couple of lap, we've got some lap lanes. So our recreation and fitness swimmers, this can still do water aerobics, we're able to accommodate quite a bit of activities, even rentals for some of the local swim clubs may be able to run out of this facility as well. And then lastly, we've got a water slide. We've got to make sure we've got that adventure element. We've also made that so that it can be shut off during the off-season if we need to while keeping the main pool open, so that we're able to conserve some things there once it's not in use. Lastly, I'd just like to point out, we're moving and transitioning our aquatics maintenance operation out of Hardee Yard, and we're moving them here. So as a part of this project, we're able to free up space in that Hardee Yard to accommodate those efforts that the city council has directed with that space moving forward, and our maintenance folks are truly excited about it. They're going to have a yard, they've got their storage, they've got their offices. It truly embeds them within an aquatic facility. It's been a really surprise, it was a surprise move for us, but we were able to accommodate it, so we're pretty excited about it. Next. So the center, and this is something that has just surprised me from our design team. You'll notice here, we've really tried to make this center a part of the park, engaging with the park, to the point of where we've got outdoor plazas that are shaded. We brought that cantilever roof out to invite folks to sit and enjoy outside. We brought that cantilever roof out to invite folks to sit and enjoy outside. People are going to be able to walk up to that window there, you'll see it in the middle on the right, and get their ticket for the pool and enter in through the gate. Those that want to go into the center, you'll notice we've got huge glass windows, those are actually open. Those will be able to be an indoor-outdoor, you'll be able to exit and engage with the park there. So again, truly excited about that. We're following the Green Building Code, so we're designing to that when we're looking at this. The architecture even, they've walked around the neighborhood and looked at the mid-century architecture of the neighborhood, and they've incorporated that into this design. So the neighborhood has been very, the recent comments we had were very respectful and appreciated the efforts that the design team has done. And then, sorry, one more thing. Just in that lower corner, you'll see on the right-hand side here, that's the new restroom facility. So we're taking it that was isolated on an island in the park before, and we're connecting it to the recreation center. We get a lot of great efficiencies from that, as well as more eyes on the restroom. So it also makes it more accessible for kids on the playground, people on the basketball courts, folks on the ball fields, all of these folks will be having access to the restroom outside of the facility hours. Next slide. All right, community outreach. Since the concept design, we've had 11 community meetings, received over 635 comments, and most recently in February, we had a virtual as well as a park open house. We were actually able to get out and engage with the community again on this. Next slide. So this is our timeline. Right now, we're right in the middle. We're developing these construction plans. In the interest of time here, we anticipate groundbreaking in June with that understanding of opening the summer of 2023. So we've really, with council support, accelerated this project, and it's right on time right now. We're actually allocating some additional funds forward so we can purchase some of those long-lead items this fiscal, so they're available in the next fiscal for us. Next slide. And just real quick, the project team, Dig Studio has been a part of this since the beginning of the concept, but they brought in Holly Street Opera Design, our construction manager is Hayden, and then there's just a list of some of the significant players from the city of Tempe. We work together, one team, one band, one sound, when it comes to this, but we're happy to have them as partners. And at this time, I take any questions, comments on the project?
Wonderful. Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it. Councilman Adams?
Yes, thank you. This is so exciting to see, and I want to thank my council members, colleagues for supporting this. When I was canvassing that neighborhood back in the day, when I was first running for council, they, they talked to me about needing this improved and needing a safe place for children to learn how to swim. So I'm so excited about this, this project, and I just have a couple of questions. One is, are we going to have any availability for pickleball courts?
So right now, there wasn't available money within the budget during this piece of the project. Now, as you'll see, we've got some space on here that if in the future, we want to come back and add.
Okay.
Part of that, too, is the equity study that we're getting ready to embark on. So we're really looking at that as an equitable distribution of some of those types of amenities within parks.
Okay.
And if this comes back as a location, by all means, there's room to put in pickleball courts at a future date.
Okay. I just have gotten a lot of feedback about they want the pickleball.
Pickleball's popular these days.
Exactly. And Sean, do you know about how much the admission costs will be?
They'll be similar to what we are now, and it's 75 cents for kids, $1.25 for adults for drop-in public swim.
Okay, thank you. And I love that you have a dog park, too. That's, that's something that's.
It's a great little piece. Actually, the Neighborhood Grant Program was actually, they, they received funds to be able to do that with that park there, so.
Yeah, it's great because it could totally activate the park. There's going to be something for everyone, you know? And I just, I'm just really excited about this project moving forward, and good job on accelerating the timeline, too, for completion.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
You bet.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else, council, comments or questions?
Oh, thanks.
That's a heck of a comment, Councilmember.
Well, she usually messes it up on the pickleball court. She's got me running all over the place.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of pickleball inside humor going on here, so. Thank you, Sean. No, really, great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. City Manager, anything else?
Yes, one last presentation. We have Cool Kids Neighborhood Justice Progress Update, Breann Fisher.
Breann!
Hello, council. Good to see you all. So as you all know, the Sustainability Office has been working hard to center human voices in our climate programs. You guys will have the opportunity to approve the Climate Action Plan update later this evening. One key group that is leading this work is our youth. We have the fortunate privilege to get grant funding from Robert Wood Johnson Foundation that is helping us test and develop some innovative strategies on youth-led work in climate programs and community resilience. I have the honor to introduce two grant-funded City of Tempe employees that are here tonight virtually, that have been getting their hands dirty in our schools, McClintock and Tempe High, with our teachers and, of course, our students. They will be presenting to you tonight, Ty and Marcus, some of their progress on this work and how they are centering youth-led voices and how they are incorporating that into our future programming. So with that, I will turn it over to Ty and Marcus.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, councilmembers, mayor, and the Tempe community for your time. My name is Ty Wagner, and I am the Youth Council Coordinator with the City of Tempe Office of Sustainability and Resilience. I am joined by my colleague, Marcus Donaldson, who will briefly introduce himself.
Thank you, Ty, and thank you, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Marcus Donaldson. I am the Community Resilience Coordinator with the Office of Sustainability and Resilience, and we are thankful for this opportunity to share with you this evening.
Thank you, Marcus. Tonight, we, we will be presenting an update on our project, Cool Kids. Cool Kids, Cool Places, Cool Futures is a youth-centered climate action project here in Tempe. It's hosted by the Office of Sustainability and designed to center youth perspectives and resilience to extreme heat. Over the last several months, our office has worked closely with McClintock High School students and teachers to develop the program. We hosted on-campus tabling events, special movie screenings, and planting days, resulting in over 75 students interested in the program. As part of this process, Tempe Teens selected their own name for the project, which is known as Neighborhood Justice. Next slide, please. These photos were taken on campus at McClintock, where we introduced students to the project and recruited a diverse group of young people interested in climate justice concepts and action. Next slide. In another recruitment effort, we hope, we hosted a special Dune movie screening where we discussed bio mimicry, sci-fi, and the need for creativity in solving complex problems like climate change. Young people identified nature-based solutions throughout the film and enjoyed important time together after being separated by the pandemic. Next slide.
Thank you, Ty. In addition to those recruitment efforts, we also hosted a McClintock Climate Action Day in December, right before winter break. We had more than 25 young people from McClintock High School sign up and quite literally get their hands dirty in some green efforts. We planted over 60 different types of shrubs, plants, and trees at two different locations at McClintock High School, one in the picture here, and another one is around the greenhouse area at McClintock. So the young people were super excited about this. This is one of their high priority tasks is to learn more about native landscaping, native vegetation, and they were able to partner with some city staff alongside for this project. Next slide, please. As Ty mentioned, we are now through our recruitment stage. We are more into our implementation stage. We successfully had our first weekly meeting with the young people last Friday. We had over, over 25 students there in attendance. The plan for this spring is to continue to meet with them on a weekly basis. We meet in a designated space on campus each Friday, in which we will go through different modules around climate justice, and we'll also kind of help them and assist the young people in figuring out some other activities that they would like to get involved in, other climate action days, as well as developing a youth portfolio. Next slide, please. And as you can see here, there's a wide array of different concepts and subjects that we'll be diving into, from child rights to an envisioning workshop that we will be hosting with master's degree students from ASU in our space, as well as collective movement, Earth Day celebrations, equity trainings, learning about resilient places, how we can envision the future in a more just and equitable way as well. And so this is the plan for this semester, and we're super thankful that we get to meet with these young people. It's been quite a task through COVID and other, other barriers, but our hope is that we can employ, we can take on these youth voices and try and implement them and their needs and wants around climate justice as we try and move towards a more resilient future in the valley and in Tempe. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Anyone from council, any comments or questions? Councilman Brad?
I just am really impressed with this program and excited to see it move forward. And I love it that we're getting the youth involved early on, so thank you for doing that.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to say that it is a great program, and Councilmember Aradondo Savage and I had the opportunity to go and work with the kids at McClintock High School, and it was so much fun. She can really wield a pickaxe, by the way. We had a lot of fun. There were lots of kids there, and they were so proud of what they were doing. So great job, you guys. Thank you.
Councilwoman Aradondo Savage, care to respond to the pickaxe comment?
I just want everybody to realize that it was a pickaxe on the ground. I wasn't chasing Doreen or anything like that. There was no, no harshness involved, but it was really great. So Breann, to you and the team, I think everybody's doing a really phenomenal job, and the kids were excited. They got up early. It was windy, it was cold, but they were still doing it, and I think that's really what it's all about, you know, getting our youth involved and getting them engaged and educating them along the same line. So it was a lot of fun. Appreciate the invite. Always fun to work with my council colleague over here, so thank you for what you guys are doing. Thank you, mayor.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other councilmembers, comments, or questions? Councilmember Cubey?
I just so appreciate you guys, Marcus, Ty, everyone associated. Just getting this grant, we have to remember once again how much, how much funding that Dr. Brayden K. has brought to the program, and having youth involvement is so crucial since the decisions we're making today have such impact on people that are young today. So thanks so much, Breann. It's so great to have you, our Climate Action Plan Manager. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Any other councilmembers, further comments, questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. City Manager, all good?
Yes, nothing further. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, item number five, public appearances. What we're going to do here is we're going to take the live speakers. We have two virtual and one in person. Now, I'm going to start with the in-person. The first card we have is from Mario Martinez. Mr. Martinez, please come forward. State your name and place of residence, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
My name is Mario Martinez. I live in Tempe. Regarding the Tempe Ku Klux Klan issue currently being considered by the council, it is imperative that this matter be addressed in a non-discriminatory fashion. If action to change the official names of some Tempe landmarks are made to change the names because they were named after former members of the council that were alleged KKK members, it is important to make it officially clear that such action is not a reflection of any of the innocent descendants of the alleged KKK members. In addition to the KKK being a racist organization, in some cases, its prominent members were responsible for violence, including rape. That public record is clear. Contemporary Tempe history is also just as clear. One does not have to be a civil and human rights expert to note that a rape of a minor and the evidence of sexual abuse of a 17-year-old are very serious issues. So far, there is no evidence that the KKK members, the Tempe KKK members did such action. The same cannot be truthfully stated about former councilman Kobe Granville. All the current members of the council, with the notable exception of Councilmember Garland, served on the council with Granville. All who served on this council are with Granville now, Lizzie, except for Cory, Lizzie, were courageous leaders in addressing the sickening Granville scandal. In Cory's discussion with me about not publicly addressing the Granville matter, Cory rationalizes that he won't be a gentleman if he publicly addresses the Granville matter. He also refuses to take responsibility for his lack of action and blames his advisors instead. In the last election, Granville endorsed Cory while Granville was vacationing in Phuket, Thailand, which is a notorious center for child sex trafficking. True to his pattern, Cory did not even disavow this endorsement. While the alleged Tempe KKK members, while their actions were abhorrent, they are not as abhorrent as Granville's actions. It is discriminatory and hypocritical for Cory to condemn the contemptible actions of the KKK of about 100 years ago and not address Granville's action. Tempe deserves equitable government treatment regarding all civil rights issues, not discriminatory actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Madam Clerk, you have two other live speakers, virtually?
Mayor, next will be Kendon Young.
Hello, mayor and council. I think I've got this down to three minutes, so give me a little bit of a break here, but thank you for allowing me to address you today. It's great to see you here in person in the Tempe chambers after so long, to feel your warm presence in this space and to speak again on the future of Tempe as you vote on approving and adopting the 2022 update to the Climate Action Plan. In 2018, I stood on this very floor as you appointed me to serve as a founding member of the Sustainability Commission, to research, advise, and recommend to you policies and programs that advance sustainability in Tempe. In 2000, or on November 7th, 2019, I came before you again to present the Valley's First and Arizona Second Climate Action Plan, a plan that created policy space for Tempe to explore this climate action work. And as you heard earlier, under the, or with Brayden K. at the helm, we and, we, over 61 organizations, including Tempe staff, community members, youth, and business, together, our collective action put Tempe on the map as a climate action leader, causing a ripple effect for cities like Mesa, Scottsdale, Phoenix, Clark Park, or Clark County, Los Angeles, and beyond. I was thrilled when Tempe unanimously adopted the Valley's First Climate Action Plan in 2018. But with that said, I was also frustrated and impatient because I did not feel that it went nearly far enough, but it was a start. Tempe has been doing a lot of work since that day on 2019, netting over $2.5 million worth of grants and gathering feedback from hundreds of Tempe community members over 23 listening sessions. They told staff what they wanted to see in the Climate Action Update, and today, council is approving the update, or is approving and adopting that update. I am proud that the plan is gaining momentum in Tempe, or gaining momentum as Tempe leads the valley, if not the state, in climate action. But I want to be very clear, the actions taken so far are inadequate. So moving forward, we need to be urgent. The science is clear, the window to take action is now. We need to welcome transformation. We need to move beyond destructive fossil fuels and embrace a clean energy economy and transportation. Increasing funding. Tempe is a climate leader in Arizona, but that will mean nothing without deep city, state, and federal investments in our buildings, homes, schools, and businesses, and we need to collaborate more. We want, if we want to move fast, we go alone, but if we want to go far, we go together. Approving and adopting the 2022 update to the Climate Action Plan is the next step toward, is the next step towards our healthy and resilient future for generations to come. And I appreciate the ability to recommend to you again tonight to approve the Climate Action Plan update. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Next is Cassandra Ayers.
I'm only here to comment if necessary on our case.
Okay, Mayor, we'll move on to the virtual audience. I believe we have someone who might be absent, but I'm going to call her name in case she's here in chambers. Jennifer Baranowski? Is Jennifer present? Next, we'll move on to Alex Stein.
Hey, I don't know if you guys can hear me. Okay, cool. It sounds like you can hear me. Hey, Mayor Cory, my name's Alex Stein. I'm a senior Fidel at ASU, and I was arrested after the Waste Management Open for a DUI. And the reason why I'm here today is I was wrongfully arrested. I'll be honest, I was at the Waste Management Open. I'm a Fidel. I was with my boys. We were deleting beers. We were getting wasted. We were taking key bombs. Like, I was on a bunch of stuff, to be honest. But I didn't drive my car home. So I meet this girl. She's Venezuelan. She's really nice. Her name's Maria. We're vibing all night. We're making out. She told me that she just like...
I'm sorry. You want me to mute that?
Right, and so I was really, you know...
Yeah? That's not it. Hey, he's gone. Well, there's a... I don't know, and we're not going to hear the rest of that this evening.
Mayor, we'll move on to Sean Swisher.
That, thank you, Madam Clerk. My goodness. That was not highly, highly inappropriate.
We'll never know now. Thanks.
My apologies. I apologize to the, I apologize to the viewing audience.
Feel the most excitement you have on the council.
Kara, is Sean Swisher present?
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Sean Swisher. I'm a resident of Tempe. I'm an architect at Jones Studio, an architecture firm in Tempe. I'm also a member of the Sustainability and Resilience Commission. I am here today to express my strong support for the approval and adoption of the 2022 Climate Action Plan update. Climate change poses the single greatest global threat to humanity and the health of our planet, as made apparent most recently by the UN's 2022 IPCC report. Living in the desert means that we will experience these effects more rapidly than many other parts of the world. Adoption of the cap in 2018 was a great first step, but it must not end there. We must take decisive action by adopting the 2022 cap update, properly fund the proposals in this plan, and continue to pursue even greater action with updates moving forward into the future. As a member of the City of Tempe Sustainability and Resilience Commission, I have seen the depth to which the cap update has incorporated diverse perspectives from throughout the Tempe community. Climate action is important to the quality of life for our citizens today and into the future. It is critical that we see the vision of a more sustainable city come to fruition as quickly as practicable. The adoption of the cap update is the next step in that effort, and I'm proud that the city is on the cusp of that next great challenge. Please approve and adopt the 2022 Climate Action Plan update. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, next we have Jake Swanson.
Okay. Mr. Swanson, are you there? Do we know if he's in the panelist or...
He was present in the virtual audience. Kara, is Jake Swanson online?
Mr. Mayor, I unmuted him. He's in the audience.
Oh! There we go.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that I'm in full support of 6C6. And I just feel like we very much need to stay up to date on all of these things. There's multiple other cities who are just at the cutting edge too, but I'm really proud of Tempe and our initial Climate Action Plan. And I feel like an update is just a natural step forward in this process and just really provided full support for that measure. Thank you for your time, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Madam Clerk?
Okay, Mayor, now I have a number of cards to be read into the record. First comes from Charles Woof regarding crime. Charles writes, "All the time I see and hear a car driving ridiculously fast down Lemon Street or Rural Road right by the Dutch Brothers next to ASU campus. It is dangerous, loud, and annoying. Why aren't the police doing something to stop this? Sometimes I will see about a dozen cop cars on Lemon Street doing what I assume is a drug bust. I don't care if people get high. It doesn't affect me. But when people zoom down Lemon to show off, it does affect me. You could easily solve this by sometimes having a cop car hide out by the barber shop on Lemon across from Dutch Brothers." Next item comes from Susan Edwards regarding code of conduct. Susan writes, "Hello, Tempe City Council, Mr. Ching and Mayor Woods. I have submitted a FOIA request in response to an article in the Wrangler News, which published a letter authored by Councilwoman Garlid. I've been Ms. Garlid's neighbor for 17 years. We have worked together on several neighborhood projects. At her request, I sewed several masks for her at the beginning of the pandemic. I coached her husband on how to pour epoxy. Basically, I was more than a casual neighbor, and I considered her my friend. We are no longer friends. This is because I have experienced and witnessed her tendency to deny and make counter accusations of what she has perpetrated when her actions and behavior are questioned. Upon request, I am happy to supply screenshots of Facebook posts, PDF documents, emails, and texts of what I'm inserting. The letter Councilwoman Garlid penned to Mr. Ching is bullying in nature. Further, if there's any merit to her accusations, the public has a right to know. If there is no merit, then I'm calling upon Mr. Ching to start a code of conduct investigation into Councilwoman Garlid's motives in sending the letter. I do not find the timing of the request or the leak to be a coincidence for the reelection of who I believe is under the redacted sections. This request saddens me. I can no longer stand by and not speak up. I know in my heart, as a longtime resident of the city of Tempe, that we are better than this. I'm equally sad and disappointed that our Tempe City Council is at such odds. I fail to see how the council can lead as an example of community building when one member is essentially backstabbing another in what appears to be an attempt to sabotage a campaign. Respectfully, Susan Edwards."
Yes, Councilmember Garlid.
Thank you. I'd like to say something. First, I want to say, Carla, I know that was hard to read. I appreciate you. I sent an email internally only on December 9 regarding my truthful concerns about the ongoing behavior and pattern of conduct of a fellow council member. I sent that email following an incident involving that same council member and a longtime city staffer. I felt an obligation to speak up because remaining silent amounts to condoning improper behavior and conduct that is simply unacceptable in the workplace. I sent the email internally only to those in a position to take action to bring an end to this behavior and the hostile work environment. I am not alone in my concerns or complaints about this council member, but it is my name and a copy of my email that were leaked to the public by some unknown person. Contrary to the comments that were just read, I did not deny and do not deny writing the email from December 9. At no time, however, did I intend for the email to become a matter for public consumption. I believe issues like this are more effectively handled on a confidential basis. It is for the reason, for that reason, that I have to date declined to discuss the substance of my email with the media. Speaking up for others is not always easy, but I will continue to speak up and speak out for what is right and against what is wrong because doing what is right is always right, even if and especially if you're standing alone. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Garlid. Madam Clerk?
Next card, Mayor, comes from Hannah Moulton-Billick. Hannah writes regarding the Climate Action Update. I'd like to urge the mayor and council to adopt the Climate Plan update. As you know, the original plan and this update has been the result of years of work by community members in Tempe, especially the Sustainability and Resilience Commission. They've gathered input and support from other commissions and from the public for more than 23 public meetings. My commission, the Neighborhood Advisory Commission, submitted a letter of support for the update as part of that outreach. This work is foundational to taking tangible action on climate change and the extreme heat we are already experiencing in Tempe. The problem is urgent, and we need to hold ourselves to task to fund and prioritize this work in our city. Next card comes from Julie Buffkin, also in support of Item 6C6 Climate Action Plan. She writes, "I support the 2022 Climate Action Plan update. I have lived, worked, and engaged with my Tempe community for several years. I have a two-year-old child. Every day, I ride my bike to my son's preschool and work at ASU. If extreme heat and other climate change effects are not urgently addressed, we have no future here. Approving and adopting the 2022 cap updates shows that my elected representatives reflect my values and interests instead of those of people who would ruin Tempe." Next item comes from Samantha Thompson, also in support of the Climate Action Plan. She writes, "I support Tempe approving and adopting the 2022 Climate Action Plan update. I was thrilled when Tempe adopted the Valley's First Climate Action Plan in 2018. With that said, I was also frustrated and impatient because I did not feel it went nearly far enough. The IPCC's latest report stated the threat that climate change poses to human well-being and the health of the planet is unequivocal. It is a start. Tempe has been doing a lot of work since 2018, gathering feedback from Tempe's diverse community over 23 listening sessions, and they told Tempe what they wanted to see in the cap update. Today, this council is approving and adopting that update, and I am proud the cap is gaining momentum as Tempe leads the valley in climate action. We will need to continue to set a bold vision and deeply invest in what we want in order to remain a leader." Next item comes from Zachary Van Toll. Zachary writes, "As a graduate student at ASU, working at the intersection of climate and social change, it is imperative to me that the place I live pushes to be at the vanguard of just climate action. The CAP put forth by the city of Tempe is a great starting point for equitable, economically feasible solutions to the hardships that all of us endure. Particularly heartening are the complementary initiatives relating to energy and transportation. Work to reduce emissions and combat warming temperatures, something we know all too well here in the valley, should work in tandem to undo systemic injustices and perpetuate equality. This plan would be an integral step in Tempe, walking down that prosperous road. There is no such thing as a climate change panacea, but this plan will show our seriousness to confront the ever-changing challenges of our time head-on. Please vote yes to a livable future." Next item comes from Valerie Ramos, also in support of the Climate Change Plan. Valerie writes, "Tempe has a chance to be a leader in our state's climate change plan. This is the next step in our climate leadership, and now is the time for the city to act." Next item comes from Natalie Mendoza in support of the Climate Action Plan. Natalie writes, "In 2018, city council wanted to make sure that all members in Tempe's community were not only represented in the Climate Action Plan, but an active participant involved in its creation. There is no doubt that this 2022 Climate Action Plan update has actively sought and incorporated feedback and ideas from community members. In a series of more than 23 listening sessions, community members belonging to a variety of diverse groups had their voices and ideas heard and incorporated in the 2022 Climate Action Plan update. As a young person who will inherit the earth, I am incredibly grateful that the city of Tempe has taken steps to fight the threats of climate change in the past. Furthermore, I am hopeful that Tempe will continue to be a leader in brainstorming, creating, and implementing the impactful and bold solutions humanity needs to immediately take to fix the worsening climate crisis. The 2022 Climate Action Plan update is yet another step that the city of Tempe can take to be a leader in climate justice and work towards creating a sustainable future. For those reasons, I kindly ask that the city council please approve and adopt the 2022 Climate Action Plan update." Next item comes from Richard Neuhauser. Richard's writing regarding negotiations between the Tempe City Council and owners of the Arizona Coyotes. The owners of the Arizona Coyotes, Alex Morello, majority owner, and Andrew Baraway, minority owner, have proven that through their activities in Glendale, they are not trustworthy partners in negotiations concerning construction of a stadium and sports center in Tempe. They did not pay their bills. They did not even pay their tax bills. It's also clear that without some infusion of tax money directly or indirectly through tax breaks, the sports center cannot be built. Any amount of financial support from the citizens of Tempe is too much. The destruction of 85281 neighborhoods that would follow the building of the sports center is inexcusable. The traffic problems this sports center would cause on game nights is something Tempe residents will be vociferous about. Therefore, I urge the Tempe City Council in the strongest possible terms to break off negotiations with Morello and Baraway immediately." Last item comes from Phaedra Mendoza regarding Climate Action Plan. Phaedra writes, "Please approve and adopt the 2022 Climate Action Plan update. The plan update inspires me. I like that the plan includes voices and perspectives of people living in diverse neighborhoods in Tempe and addresses the urgent need to invest in sustainability and climate adaptations today. We need to collaborate with our neighboring communities to invest in sustainable solutions that address extreme heat, drought, and air pollution. The IPCC's latest report states that human influence on Earth's climate has become unequivocal, increasingly apparent and widespread, reflected in both the growing scientific literature and in the perception and experiences of people worldwide. The time for humanity to act and invest in our future is now. Please approve and adopt Tempe's 2022 Climate Action Plan update." Mayor, that closes the public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Really appreciate it. The next item is Item 60, Consent Agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk. Councilmembers may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with the disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card located next to the city clerk and submit your completed card back to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. The consent agenda tonight is miscellaneous items 6A1 through 6A13, awards of bids and contracts, items 6B1 through 6B17, and resolutions, items 6C1 through 6C20. Any item marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item and can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. Okay. Madam Clerk, I want to ask also, were there any comments received from the public wishing to address the city council on a consent agenda public hearing item?
Nothing for the public hearing items, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll now turn to my colleagues on council. Anything you'd like to pull for separate considerations? 6C6. Thank you, Councilmember Devaro. Councilmember Cubey? 6C6.
Yeah, I'll pull 6C6, too.
All right, perfect. Sounds good. And I'd like to pull Item 6A13.
Mayor, I believe it's 6A19.
Is it? No, it says 6A13.
That's a liquor license on my agenda.
That is not a liquor license on my agenda. Is that a liquor license? Everybody else have? 6A13? Okay, I'm, okay. We're gonna, I'm gonna confer with Ms. Reese. Okay, so I got this one.
Yeah, this I have, too.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you like to wait a couple minutes, or?
Yeah, give me a couple.
Okay, all right, let's take a five-minute recess.
So Mayor, we've confirmed that the public version and the version you have of the agenda is the correct one.
Got it.
Mine was outdated.
Sounds good. Perfect. Excellent. Wonderful. All right, so we will reconvene this meeting at 7:42 PM. Councilmember Arredondo Savage, you had one more item you'd like to pull?
Yes, Mayor. 6C1?
6C1. Okay. All right, so, looks like we have Items 6A13, 61, and 66. So I will go ahead then and see if there is a motion to approve the consent agenda as miscellaneous items 6A1 through 6A13, awards of bids and contracts, Items 6B1 through 6B17, and resolutions, Items 6C1 through 6C20, with the exception of Items 6A13, 6C1, and 66 that have been removed for separate consideration. So moved? Moved by Vice Mayor Keating, seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
You might need to refresh your screen.
Nope. Screen's always fresh. That's the line of the night. I'm giving that one to you. Let's see, I'll do a quick roll call vote here. Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Okay, and so that item passes seven to zero. Next up, we'll take the items that were pulled for separate consideration. First one is Item 6A13, which is to approve the appointment of an employment agreement for Sonia Blaine as city attorney. I pulled this item just to say, congratulations, Sonia. You've done such exceptional work in the city attorney's office and previously as our deputy city attorney, and so just really excited that you're going to be staying with us as our permanent city attorney, and just looking forward to continuing to work with you, and just so excited for you, and we're just glad to have you. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm so happy to have you also, Sonia, on board now, and it's just so exciting. You're such a professional, and you give such great advice, and I just, I know, I feel so much confidence moving forward with you in that leadership seat. Thank you for agreeing to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Any other council members? Councilmember Garland? Oh, oh, it's a thumb. Sorry.
I'm just giving her the thumbs up, going, you rock.
Anyone else? All right. Hearing nothing, I will ask for a motion to approve Item 6A13.
So moved.
I'm going to say it was moved by Councilmember Devaro, seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. Please vote.
I'm having trouble believing.
I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
And Councilmember QB?
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. Congratulations, Sonia. All right, next up, we have Item 6C1, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Tempe and the East Valley Regional Veterans Court participating municipalities. And that was pulled by Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I didn't pull it for any other reason, just to recognize and say a great appreciation and thank you. I know Alexis Allen is here. I thought I saw Judge Kane. I don't know if he was still here either. Sure, he stepped out, yeah. He left you hanging. But I just want to say, this program has been going on since 2016. I know Alexis was a part of it when we started this program, and the collaboration between the many cities and how it is hosted right here in the city of Tempe has served over 1,000 individuals that have successfully completed and graduated from the program. So it's just a really great opportunity and a really wonderful resource and a great collaboration to be able to help our veterans that may have got themselves in a little bit of trouble, but yet then have the opportunity to align with those resources that are so important, those resources that they've earned, and they're able to turn things around, and it definitely improves their quality of life. So Alexis, on behalf, I just want to say thank you so much for everything that you do. Thanks to the court and their team. Please express my appreciation. I am really just proud to be a part of this collaboration and glad that we're able to host it right here in the city of Tempe. I know you guys continue to change lives, and I'm really grateful and very proud of what we've been able to do. So with that, I'd like to move approval, Mayor, of Item 6C1.
Thank you. Moved by Councilmember Arredondo Savage and seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote. All right, and I'll just do one more. Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Okay, and that item passes seven to zero. The last item from the consent agenda is Item 6C6, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city council to approve the city of Tempe 2022 Climate Action Plan update. And that was pulled by Councilmember Devaro.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, no, I know that everyone's going to probably see a little piece on this. I just want to recognize, the update is really strategic for us, for the city, and I appreciate our staff looking into this further. I think members of the audience have expressed their opinion about supporting this, and obviously we are. One of the big things, and there's many big things in this package, is when we talk about right-of-way, right-of-way infrastructure, it's how we collect the rainwater, how we utilize what we can in a desert, and to make this place grow even further. The cutouts on the street to absorb or to perforate, the water through the concrete, so to speak, and how we structurally do that, that only just adds to the landscape, and it makes the trees a lot bigger and a lot lusher. And those are the impacts in the city. Those are the things that you see as a community, you see as people drive through or your residents. So those are things that also help with our heat island effect and provide shade. So we're actually doing things that are probably better for our community, better for our vegetation, and better for the environment, and hopefully reducing the heat infrastructure on that. In addition to that, one more thing was the fact that we're practically looking into the ability to live off the grid, to have community centers that are virtually standalone centers off the grid, meaning that they could be actually utilized for resources or for the ability to hold people when we have maybe a possibility of electricity going down or some sort of disaster. We hopefully have an off-the-grid facility. These are the kind of concepts and things that I think that we're talking about worldwide. These are the things that we're trying to strive to, and I think it's, Kendon, you brought that up, and I had to share, I was like, man, I'd write on. But these are one of the things that when we see and we talk about global instruction, global warning, what we're doing hopefully is a template for other communities to follow. And I think that with our plan, what we're doing in our climate action plan is going to lead the way. We need to do more, obviously, and we're getting there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Devaro. Vice Mayor Keating?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just want to thank Kendon and the Sustainability Commission and staff and everyone that, I know they went to several different commissions to bring this forward and to update our Climate Action Plan. I'm very proud of Tempe for being the first city in the Valley to adopt a Climate Action Plan, and I'm proud of Tempe for updating it for the future. So, you know, I'm sure it will pass seven-nothing, not to predict anyone's votes, but, you know, it's thanks to the folks that worked in the community and thanks to our staff, and of course, Dr. Braden Kay, that makes, you know, a plan like this possible for the city. And once again, Tempe is leading the way, and I couldn't be prouder of the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Anyone else from council? Councilmember QB?
Thank you. So 2020, 53 days where temperatures exceeded 110 degrees, and that's not an outlier. That's a fact of life and an increasing fact of life. And just last week, there was a report released that said that we're in the worst drought since, in 1,200 years. 1,200 years. It's a 20-year mega drought. Can you imagine that? 1,200 years. So the time is long past due to act, to take action, but these actions don't, they don't happen in a vacuum, and I just need to credit some people, many of whom are not here. But I want to thank Ani Shakurjian. So years ago, I never had the pleasure of serving with Ani. You three did. So you got to experience her leadership, and, you know, she's a Republican. Some people think that climate change is not of interest to Republicans. Not so. You know, Ani showed that climate is the great convener, and she started a lot of this movement that Tempe took toward a more sustainable and resilient future. And in 2015, the council, many of you are here, established the Sustainability Commission. And Kendon Young was one of the first appointees. He was an ASC student then. He still is, but now he's getting his PhD. And we're so proud. I don't want to be maternalistic. I was telling you, Kendon, I am so damn proud of you and your leadership in the community and the way you've brought people together from across the city in support of this Climate Action Plan. There are so many people that have served with you on the commission, and I'm thinking, you know, of the Chamber of Commerce, too, and Suki and her service. We've had folks from the Chamber of Commerce and Local First and the faith-based networks. And we have Barbie Burke, Natalie Mendoza, Stephanie Milan Edwards, who's a teacher at Tempe High, Dr. Joyce Vesper, Dr. Katja Brandiers, and Megan Kuhn, Jake Swanson, Sean Swisher. So many leaders in their own right in so many different sectors, and we wouldn't be here if it weren't for the leadership of the Sustainability and Resilience Commission. And I have Dr. Braden Kay, who leads us all, who started here in 2016, I believe, and he quietly made a listening tour of the entire city and approaching every staff member he could to talk about his concept of sustainability, which at its very root, very core, was about equity. And now Grace Kelly, our energy manager, has been so crucial to all these efforts, and Brianne Fisher, now we have a Climate Action Plan manager, and Ty and Marcus and so many fellows and interns that have been a part of this process. So I'm so proud. I'm so proud of our city and know that we will, I imagine we will pass this unanimously. And I think about where we've come since, you know, since Ani first introduced a lot of these concepts to us years ago. And I would just urge our council that along with this vote tonight, that we really follow it up with action and investment. And I'll just read you a very short paragraph from the IPCC report released on the 28th, and you should be proud that ASU had, I think, six scientists involved with writing that report. But they wrote, "To avoid mounting loss of life, biodiversity, and infrastructure, ambitious accelerated action is required to adapt to climate change at the same time as making rapid, deep cuts in greenhouse gas emissions. So far, progress on adaptation is uneven, and there are increasing gaps between action taken and what is needed to deal with increasing risks." So I just ask us to be brave and to move forward and really invest in our future and invest in this Climate Action Plan. And thank you, Kendon, looking at you.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. I was going to say something, but everyone has said everything that I would have said, so. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add, or?
I second everything.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. All right, do I have a motion to approve Item 6? Okay, there is so much competition up here tonight. It's been moved by Councilmember Devaro and seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. Please vote. And Councilmember QB?
Aye.
All right, and that item passes seven to zero. All right. Next up, Item Number Seven is the Nonconsent Agenda. All items listed on the nonconsent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Councilmembers who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form at this time. First up, we have miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. The first item under the section is 7A1, which is to approve the fiscal year 2020/2021 financial reporting package and audit reports submitted by the city's external auditors, Heinfeld, Meach &amp; Co., PC. When I look, I see Tom Dunzing, our interim deputy city manager and chief financial officer, as well as Brittany Williams, who's an auditor with Heinfeld Meach, to give a little bit of a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for the introduction, Mayor. Before you tonight is a request to hear a presentation by Heinfeld, Meach &amp; Company, and in particular Brittany Williams, the managing partner with Heinfeld Meach, and approve the fiscal 2021 financial reporting package. Just, I'll just do a brief background. Recent state law requires that the audit, the CPA performing the city's audit, come and present the results of our audit. That audit was completed in December, and we've got 90 days to get before you at council, and Brittany's here to give a short presentation. I'll turn it over to Brittany.
Thanks so much, Tom. Mayor, members of city council, thank you so much for having me here tonight. You get to see me annually now due to the recent legislation. Congratulations. I will make it as brief as I can because we did actually meet with the Audit Committee already in depth and went through all the reports and their questions, so, but I am here for questions for you as well. So just to tell you a little bit about our firm, if you're not familiar with Heinfeld and Meach, we've been here for 36 years auditing government not-for-profit entities in the state of Arizona. It's the only sector that we do, so we're very highly specialized in governmental audits. And the requirements there, we do something called a single audit, which is testing the federal expenditures for the city, and we're actually one of the firms in the country that does many, many of those, so over 100 a year about. We have 57... We have 57 staff members in three separate offices, and we have 24 in our Scottsdale office. We manage the City of Tempe audit out of our Scottsdale office. We're members of several communities, especially the AICPA Government Audit Quality Center, and provide a lot of CPE and trainings to our staff. We get audited by other auditors as well and by federal and state agencies, often come in and ask us questions and review things. And all of those have been well-received. We get pass ratings, so just to reiterate that we're, you know, we perform high-quality work. And these are some of our clients that we serve currently. So we, we do audit 18 municipalities. You'll recognize several of them on here. Some of your East Valley friends, city of Scottsdale, Chandler, Town of Gilbert, among many others. So, just to give you a little bit of background, there are many standards that guide the audit, and we perform several different audits. So the first one is the AICPA Statements on Auditing Standards, which guides our work papers and our documentation. Uniform Guidance, OMB Uniform Guidance, that guides our federal compliance audit. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board is the board that sets the financial reporting standards for the ACFOR, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And then the government auditing standards are unique to governments because governments always get to have extra stuff. So we have internal controls that we have, have to dig into deeper just for governmental entities. So as you can see, it takes, you know, a lot of knowledge to be able to comply with all of these standards, and management of the city does a great job of assisting us and reporting in accordance with guidance and being in compliance with the federal compliance requirements as well. We can go ahead and go. So the main thing that you would want to see tonight is the Independent Auditors Report, right? So this is our audit report. The very first paragraphs you can see are our opinion for the city's financial statements. We gave a clinic opinion on the fiscal year 21 financial statements and indicated that they were materially correct, and everything looked good. I won't walk you through the entire 200-page document. No. Let me know if you want that next time. So some things just to consider for the fiscal year 21 audit and the next year is that obviously there was a big change in the federal monies coming through to the city because of the CARES Act, CRISA Act, American Rescue Plan Act. Obviously, that has increased and changed our single audit approach for the federal awards significantly. We have to spend a lot more time on them, change the rules a little bit, change the timeline a little bit, so that'll probably continue going forward, I imagine indefinitely. And some of the GASB financial reporting pronouncements that affect the city, this year it was GASB 84, which changed the way that fiduciary activities were presented. And this coming year, it will be GASB 87. It's actually a very big change in the way that leases are accounted for, for the city and presented in the financial statements. And the, the city has taken numerous steps in the last couple of years to compile that list and develop, have software in place to make sure that it's implemented correctly. So that's really good. These are all of the audit reports that we issue pretty much annually for the city of Tempe. So I send audit communication to those charged with governance. I sent that to all the audit committee members on 12/30. That kind of talks about any issues that we would have come across, disagreements with management or anything like that would be in there. There was none of that. We issued the annual, the opinion on the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report prepared by Tom and his team in December, meeting the 12/31 deadline for the, for the excellent awards in reporting. We issued the Highway User Revenue Fund Report in compliance with state statute, the single audit report in January, the Annual Expenditure Limitation Report was issued yesterday, housing fund report was issued a couple of weeks ago, and the only thing left for this year is that HUD React certification, which is always the last one. So we're, we're just waiting for the final touches on that, and that'll be done. So as soon as we wrap up, you know, one year, we're headed into the next, and we'll be out planning and, and working with the team again here in the next couple of months. So it's a year-round process. It's a collaborative effort, and it goes very well. Your city staff does a wonderful job. And there's a few elements to the single audit reporting package. There's a couple of different letters in there. We have to report on internal control in accordance with government auditing standards, internal control with compliance for federal awards, and there is a schedule of expenditures of all the federal awards that are spent in one fiscal year by the city, and the city spent $30 million in fiscal year 21 in federal awards. And then we talk about any major federal programs that we tested and any findings that were found. So the best place to see a synopsis of this report is on page six of the single audit reporting package, and this is it. I've done a screenshot for you. And basically, it takes the financial statements, the government section up top, then the federal awards, then it gives our major federal programs. As you can see, there's no's all the way down indicating that we didn't have any findings, no significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, non-compliance issues. This is as good as it gets. This is a, this is a beautiful page. There's no issues. So I've had, you know, I'm grateful to be here. I've had the opportunity to talk to a couple of you. As part of our audit procedures, we alternate every year as city council member and make sure that we incorporate you into our audit and ask you any questions about fraud or misconduct related to fraud or cash mismanagement or anything like that. And so if you haven't heard from us, you probably will some year, and I'm usually the one that's calling, so it's good to see you in person, and I'm here for any questions you might have.
Thanks. Thank you so much, Councilmember Garland.
I just want to say that being a part of the audit committee for the city of Tempe, I really enjoy working with you, and I, I can vouch, they, she gave us a very thorough presentation. You guys are getting the little tiny Reader's Digest one, but it was a great presentation. I think you guys are very thorough in what you do, and I really appreciate working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I'm also on the audit committee, and you are doing a great job. And it's, you made it really easy to understand, which I think is super helpful, and I appreciate all your hard work. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
And your professionalism.
Thank you.
Councilmember Devaro?
Just one question, Tom, you feel okay?
Mayor, members of council, I feel great.
Okay, good. You passed. It's like CSI.
I would like to say, Mayor, members of the council, you can see we're highly regulated. We have a very small but, but amazing staff that works with Brittany and her staff to give the city clean audits, assurances to the council and public. Plus, Heinfeld Meach, they're the best in the business, so we're very lucky to have them. So, so Mayor, I do request that you put up to vote the reporting package. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Do I have a motion on item 7A1?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna say this time, moved by, moved by Councilmember Garland, because we kind of like locked eyes first, and I'm gonna go second here to Vice Mayor Keating. So, I'm just saying, so, you know. Wow. All righty, please, please vote.
We don't get out much.
Councilmember QB says aye. Councilmember Devaro?
Aye.
Perfect. Seven-nothing. Perfect, thank you. That item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 7A2, which is to approve a one-year contract renewal with Allied Universal Security Incorporated to provide security offer services for various city departments. Council, any comments or discussion?
Move to approve.
It's moved by Vice Mayor Keating. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. Councilmember QB?
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 7A3, which is to award a two-year contract with three one-year renewal options with Cigna Dental Health Plant of Arizona Incorporated to provide a dental preferred provider organization plan and dental health maintenance organization plan for eligible city employees and their dependents. Council, any comments or discussion?
Move to approve.
Been moved by Councilmember Devaro and seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 7A4, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the approval of the Public Improvement Plan for the preparation of General Plan 2050. The applicant is the city of Tempe. Council, any comments or discussion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Vice Mayor Keating, seconded by Councilmember Devaro. Please vote. Councilmember QB?
Aye.
That item passes seven to nothing. The last item under the section is 7A5, which is to approve a change order allowance to PCL Construction Incorporated for the asset management South Tempe Water Treatment Plant Reservoir GMP-7 project located at 6,600 South Price Road. Council, any comments or discussion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Vice Mayor Keating, seconded by Councilmember Devaro. Please vote. Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Okay, and that item also passes seven to zero. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. The second hearing and vote for this item is scheduled for April 28, 2022. We've got item 7B1 here, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for an amended planned area development overlay to modify development standards and a development plan review for a new 24-story mixed-use development consisting of 724 units and ground-floor commercial uses on Lot 6 for South Pier located at 1306 East Vista del Lago Drive. The applicant is Gamage &amp; Burnham, PLC. I see Ms. Vaz.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time, for your record. Bonjola Vaz, Law Firm of Gamage &amp; Burnham. I'm here today with George Malara from Nelson Partners, who's gonna talk a little bit about the architecture. I'm just gonna give you a brief presentation that we gave to the DRC about Lot 6 of South Pier. Jason? Okay. Can I control this, or you're gonna control? Okay.
I can, you understand?
Whatever you prefer. Thank you. I'm here tonight on behalf of South Pier at Tempe Town Lake. So as you all know, the, what was originally Pier 202 project consists of nine lots that are north of Real Salado on the south side of Tempe Town Lake. Today, we are talking about, I'm talking really about the blue, but the whole master plan is outlined in red on the screen, which is seven lots. There are two lots that I'm going to describe that are not part of the master plan. So just to, again, to kind of broaden it out, you can see, excuse me, the master plan consists of lots 4, 2, 1, 7, 8, and 9, and then tonight, I'm gonna talk about Lot 6. Lot 3 is not a part, and then Lot 5, which I'll talk about, is also not a part. Oops. There you go. For those of you, and I know you have seen it, but just for the public, if they have not seen it, as they may remember, this property had started in the early 2000s and had an improvement district. There has been improvements done, all the infrastructure is in, and if you drive by, you may see large holes in the ground where they were gonna put in underground parking. So I just wanted to show the public what has been there, what is, currently exists on site. Okay? Just, here's a surrounding uses map, just to give everybody a sense of the uses. So again, as I mentioned, in 2007, this council approved what was called Pier 202. So at that time, that was 3.6 million square feet of building. So it had nine towers ranging from 187 feet to 310 feet on multiple lots over 27 gross acres. That included 1,484 residential units, 285 hotel rooms, and commercial. Then in 2012, the council approved a 17-story senior living facility on development Lot 3. And in 2016, this council approved, or, council approved two 23-story towers, the 586 multifamily units on Lot 5. That is currently under development if you drive by, and what we're talking about on Lot 6 is similar to Lot 5. This, just to give you a sense and for the public of what the original intent of Pier 202 was, and so if you drive by and you see how the infrastructure was done, you can kind of see in the site plan at the top right, that was what the improvement district has done. And so the plan we have kind of, you know, improves on, but certainly follows the infrastructure that was put in originally. So again, the application, which we'll come back in April, talk about, is for PAD for just Lot 6 of sites, site-specific development standards, and the DPR for Phase 1, which is Lot 6 and Track B. So the overall master plan that we're talking about, again, with the seven lots, was 13 towers of varying heights, and that's over 18.4 acres. We have 2,592 multifamily residential units, 2,182 apartments, 160 condos, and 250 senior living. We'll have 120,000 square feet of retail, 520 hotel rooms, and 610,000 square feet of commercial space. So that is a large master plan that we intend, that's gonna be over 15 years. So today, oops, okay, we're Phase 1, which is Lot 6. And today, we're talking about three mixed-use towers that are ranging in height from 236 to 259 feet. They'll have 724 multifamily residential units, 16,000 square feet of ground-level restaurant space, George is gonna talk about, 9,900 ground-level retail space, almost 4,000 square feet outdoor dining patio and indoor and outdoor amenities. And you'll see, we've really tried, a lot of, we've meditized this. Certainly, we have Dig Studio, who you all saw at Clark Park, working on the landscape plan, and certainly what they've been part of in the Town Lake master plan. And so they've done a lot, what you saw in Clark Park, they've kind of enhanced it here. You'll see, George will talk about it. We have a 2,100 square foot central green, substantial landscape improvements, 836 vehicle parking spaces. So I'm gonna let George take over and talk a little bit and have the fun part, have some beautiful pictures, and talk about the project.
Thank you. One of the things that we focus on is the spaces.
Introduce yourself just again, sorry.
George Malara with Nelson Partners, 15210 North Scottsdale Road. One of, excited to be here in front of you and to present this project. It's something that we're really excited about. In terms of activating the waterfront area here for Tempe, we think that this project's gonna make a significant contribution in terms of activation. We have, as you see here, this is the Track B portion that has water features, has places for people to gather. Our primary focus in the work that we do is really about creating places that connect to the community, places that enhance the environment and focus on the outdoor spaces as well. So we have landscape boardwalk area, and as we move through, one of the things that we did here is we took the block and instead of doing a whole block that had three towers on it with a large podium, one of the things that we did is we broke it up, and so we have two towers that are on the podium, and then one tower that just comes all the way to the ground. One of the things that this does is reduces the mass of the building in terms of the bulkiness, but it also created more connections to the Tempe Town Lake. So this area right here is the Track B, and this area here is open, so it kind of connects you and provides additional connection to Tempe Town Lake. This is a view that you can see kind of the enhanced landscape along the Tempe Town Lake edge, and you can see some little promenades that come out that enhance the area, which will house, you know, areas for people to kind of sit and dining. So dining and the restaurants that happen, happen all toward, toward the lake as well. You can see this view here and some people on paddle boards. This is a view, internal view, along Vista del Lago. You see the retail, you see the base of the building being articulated. Here's a close-up view showing the connections. So we have stone at the, at the bound, base of the building, the restaurants and storefronts. And here's a view kind of looking the other direction from Tempe Town Lake across. You can see these areas, we, again, what we wanted to do is enhance that, that environment, provide additional shading, and the restaurants that would, you know, gather that area. So here's just some additional views. And this is that additional connection that we mentioned, that another break between the buildings to add a further connection to Tempe Town Lake. You see the residential that will be up against the water, the residential amenities on the rooftops that will look, look down into that space.
And this is just a Phase 1 and future Phase 2 running. So this is to give you a sense of, kind of, this is Lot 6 we're talking about. Our next lot would probably come to you in several years, but we'll, it's Lot 7. That's our intent, to kind of go east. And in the future, we are planning a Ferris wheel and a new deck, so I'd show the DRC just to give you a sense of kind of the next couple of phases. I mean, the plan is to build a tower every couple of years, so, you know, you're probably looking at six years for Lot 6, but just to give you a sense of what's going on. But we're really excited. We think it adds a larger new amenity to the lake. So just happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Any comments or questions?
You can just approve it now.
Yeah, I'll make a comment.
Yes, Councilmember Braddo Savage.
You know what? I just want to say to both of you, thank you so much for coming here and showing this. I am super excited to see this actually come out of the ground, and I'm really looking forward to see what's going to happen. I know I'm not going to be on the council probably when it's all done, obviously, but it's been, it's been empty for so long, and to see some movement and the energy that you guys are bringing to the table and the team that you've created, I think we're going to be in for something that's going to be really remarkable. So thank you, guys. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I concur with Councilmember Robyn Darin-Donnell Savage. Say that a fast three times. I think it's just a wonderful project. I've seen that empty for so many years, and it just is an eyesore. It doesn't generate any taxes for us. It just is, it's just an eyesore. So this is going to be a gorgeous project, and I'm just really happy to support it. I'm also very excited about the Ferris wheel coming. I think that would look really cool over the lake and really just keep engaging the lake. So thank you for hanging in there with this project. I know it took a long time, but appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You know, the councilmembers? Councilmember Navarro?
It's wonderful. I was telling Woods over here, Woods, if this was done in 28, 2008, we'd see it now. I mean, we've been waiting so long for something like this. So I'm impressed. Disneyland-like. I mean, you guys are looking at all the elements, looking at all the green, the vegetation. I'm excited. It just says it. So thanks.
Thank you very much.
You just totally dated us too, man.
I know.
Man!
I want to let people know where you're at.
A lot of time has gone by since we first started around here, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to say too, just very quickly, great presentation and really appreciate it. And the fact is too, you know, this really is in keeping with the vision of what the lake was supposed to be when it was first conceptualized, is this kind of development, this sort of high-rise, sort of high-density. I like the mixture of, you know, for-sale condos and hotel rooms and other kind of public amenities, and of course, you know, talking about the development agreement at a previous meeting, but this really was what the vision of this lake was supposed to produce. And this is really the last parcel on the south side that we're really looking to develop, to have a fully completed south side of the lake. And so I just wanted to say thank you, and I know, you know, it took a while to kind of get this going, but obviously, you know, great work takes time. And so really appreciate your efforts and great-looking project.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Right. I should ask too, Madam Clerk, do we have, actually, I should ask first, is anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? All right, Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from members of the public wanting to speak on this item?
Nothing for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. We've already had the comments and discussion. I'll just reiterate that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for April 28th, 2020, April 28th, 2022. All right. Next up here, we have items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption. These items were read and introduced on February 10th, 2022. Votes on these items will be taken tonight, except for item 7C3, in which the vote will occur on April 28th, 2022. First up, we've got ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption. The first item under this section is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from CSS TOD to MU4 TOD, and a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, a public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing a general plan projected land use map amendment from residential to mixed use, and a general plan projected density map amendment from medium to high density, and to approve a development plan review for a new three-to-five-story mixed-use development consisting of 182 dwelling units and commercial uses on 2.86 acres for Haven at Apache, located at 1916 East Apache Boulevard. The applicant is Birch and, I'm messing it up again. I did it again. Birch and Cratchelo? I got to get it right at some point. Cratchelo. I'm going to get it right at some point, I'm telling you.
Crackiolo.
Yeah.
It's a very Italian name.
I messed that one up. I also want to just make a really quick note too, that the resolution authorizing the general plan amendments requires at least a two-thirds city council majority vote, which is five out of seven of us, for approval. I will turn it over.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Brennan Ray, 1850 North Central, here on behalf of the applicant, Geffen Development Partners. I gave a briefing last month and am happy to go back down that path if I need to. I know we've been here a while already tonight, and I know there's other items on the agenda. So with that, I will just say very briefly that we have worked closely with staff, we've worked closely with CIVAC on the design of this development, incorporated CIVAC's comments into it, and appreciate the feedback we've received. We appreciate the thoroughness of staff's report and would request your recommendation for approval. If I may, Mayor, I know there were two questions that came up during the introduction. I'd just like to address those very briefly. There was a question, I believe, by Councilmember Cubey as to affordable housing, and at the time, I didn't, I thought we had submitted the statement that we're required to submit, and we did submit that statement. There are no homes currently on the site, and so there's not a lot of information to be gleaned from that document. But with respect, as I mentioned at the last hearing, we do plan to contribute in accordance with the guidelines for the mayor's and this council's Hometown for All initiative, and we're more than happy to do that as well. The other question that came up kind of dealt, I think it was Councilmember Arredondo Savage asked a question about this gym and what it is that we're going to do with that. And certainly, it's something that we've, we are planning for it to be a public gym. We plan on marketing it, no different than any other gymnasium that exists in the area. We recognize that we're at a mid-block location, and unlike a coffee shop that's readily identifiable and people are easy to gravitate to, we know that this is going to be a little different. So we do plan on working with our area neighbors, with the community members, with CIVAC as well. And similar to what you would do in terms of offering, you know, limited free initial memberships, discounted memberships, certainly, we want this to be not only a place for our residents, but the public to be able to gather as well. When we initially started down this road, I will tell you, the design of where the fitness center was physically located in the building is different from where it is today. And so in working with staff, we've shoved that roughly 2,500-square-foot fitness center up to Apache so that people can see it and experience it and know that it's there. Additionally, I know that there is a stipulation under the development plan review, stipulation 13, that requires that this be a public gym for public use. And certainly, a few other things that we're able to do is that we're willing to do targeted internet marketing as well. I mean, the internet's a fabulous thing, and to be able to really market and target those people within the surrounding area, those that access the internet, to be able to do that. And certainly, one of the things that we've willing to do is we've heard a concern, as some gym memberships can get very pricey as they come and go. And so one of the things that we are willing to commit to is certainly a kind of a minimum monthly amount that people would pay for. We think a two-year period is a good window, and we would be willing to cap that at roughly $40 a month. But we're open to feedback on that particular issue if we need to discuss it. But in looking at kind of the price range of stuff in the area, we kind of felt that was a pretty good even road number to count on. So I believe those two questions. I don't know if there's any additional questions that Mayor or council might have, but again, we're excited to be here. Geffen is a national developer that does Class A multifamily developments, and so we would request your approval in accordance with staff and the DRC's recommendation.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Let me just really quickly, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Madam Clerk, do you have any cards or requests to speak?
No submissions for this item, Mayor.
I will close the public hearing. I'll move now to the council. Vice Mayor Keating?
I will be supporting this project, but my gym is $9.99 a month, so I'm just throwing that out there.
Do you have weights on it?
It's just my backyard. No, but I do, I do have weights. It is not the best gym. I'm just saying, like, I don't know, $40 seems like a lot. But anyway, I'm going to support the project anyway. I just, that price point, I don't know, seems like a lot. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Anyone else from council? Councilmember Braddo Savage?
You know what? Thank you, first and foremost, just for addressing the concerns that we brought up. I did my homework, and actually, I had some other individuals kind of help me do my homework, so I do appreciate their efforts, and I have to agree with Vice Mayor here, because $40 a month to me, and I'm assuming the lands, the space that you're being able to put together and create that gym, I mean, I'm looking at it, it's a true mixed-use plate. I like everything about this development, and I don't have an issue with that. However, if you want to truly be mixed-use, it needs to be something that the public can use. And I think if you're going to outprice them, then that's not, to me, public use. So I would agree with the Vice Mayor. I think if we can come up with a number that's a little bit more reasonable, at least for those first two years, like you recommended, maybe like even around the $25 range, just based on some of the things that we've done. Randy's right. I mean, the Vice Mayor's right. There are some that are about $10, and if we could keep it, you know, around the $25 a month range, you know, I'm definitely all in.
Thank you.
I know the public hearing's been closed, but I'll give my thumbs up to the 25.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Exactly. Any other members of council, any comments or questions? Councilmember Adams?
I like your tie. Is that in honor of Ukraine tonight?
I wish I could say I was that smart to plan ahead. It was not. It just went with the outfit.
All right. Thank you. I'm supporting the project also. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Navarro?
Motion to approve.
Okay, been moved by Councilmember Navarro. And actually, let me just say really quickly here, with the 25, oh, you got it? With the, okay, so I will, okay, $25, okay, so let me ask Madam City Attorney. So this conversation about a stipulation, about a $25 cap for the gym membership, but there's two votes on this item, and I'm just curious as to where we would add a stipulation like that.
Are you proposing, Mayor, to approve this matter subject to the addition of a stipulation?
Yes.
Yes, you can certainly make a motion to approve the matter with the addition of the addition that you want to make, and see if you get a second on it.
And that item would, and that's fine for the first vote here, for the general plan projected land use map amendment?
Yes, it is.
Okay, sounds good.
About two years?
For two years, yep. Okay, so let's do this then. So we've got the first vote here, and that's going to be on the general plan projected land use map amendment and the general plan projected density map amendment. Does someone want to make a motion with that condition?
I'll go ahead and make the motion with the condition of the $25 for the two years.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. Please vote. Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Okay, and that item passes seven to zero. The second vote is on the zoning map amendment, planned area development overlay, and development plan review. Is there a motion on this item?
So move second.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice, by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. Please vote.
That's the Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
I know.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Okay, and that item also passes seven to zero.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
We're having trouble on this end with the computers, just for the record.
You got to, I have to look at that side of the, that side of the dais, so. All righty, next item under the section is 7C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to receive public comment on and adopt a resolution authorizing the annual community development block grant home program and emergency solutions grant action plan for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Would staff like to give an overview?
Move to approve.
All right. First, let me just see if there's any public comment on this item. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Madam Clerk, any requests to speak?
No submissions for this item, Mayor.
Okay, close the public hearing. With those motion made by Vice Mayor Keating, do I have a second?
I have seconded it.
Seconded by, oh.
I already did.
Oh, okay. Seconded by Councilmember Adams. Let's go ahead and vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 7C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to receive public comment on and adopt a resolution authorizing the annual action plan for the one-time funding associated with the home program received through the American Rescue Plan Act for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Yes?
Mayor, we don't have any submissions, but we did note that this vote was supposed to take place at an April meeting.
That's correct. All right.
That's where you're going.
Yep. Okay. Last one, see if anyone wants to speak. Anyone? Anyone in? Any requests to speak?
No submissions for this item, Mayor.
You know, Bueller? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussions?
Approve.
Okay, just, we're just, no, he has no motion, either, so.
Motion to approve. There's no motion?
Nope.
I'm trying to motion 7C4.
All right, so, okay, so no comments or questions, council on item 7C3? Okay, sounds good. Well, the next vote on this item is scheduled for April 28th, 2022, the final vote, I should say. The next item under the section is 7C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the transfer of real property located at 250 West Rio Salado Parkway to 250 Rio Owner LLC, and authorizing the mayor or his designated execute all associated agreements, addenda, conveyances, and other related documents. Ms. Vaz?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
On for so long.
I know. Thank you. For your record, Bonjola Vaz, Law from Gamage &amp; Burnham. Because I didn't have a picture last time, I did want to show a picture and answer Councilmember Cubey's question.
I like pictures.
Just for the, for the people, just so we're all together. The land swap is the, we're going to swap Lot 3 on the northern half, which, as you know, is the southern half of what looks like a public parking lot to people currently owned by a private entity for Lot 2, which is a small, but for Lot 2, which is a small yellow sliver. And as we do that, we will be able, we'll be coming back to this council for a property, this small yellow sliver is part of the Ash Avenue Bridge abutment that we've been going to HPC, and we're coming back to the council, returning that back into the historic Ash Avenue Bridge abutment. We've been talking to Councilmember Arredondo Savage about the Veterans Memorial, so all of that will be coming back to this council. And the city of Tempe will receive the southern half of the public parking lot, so that that public parking lot will remain in the public, to the public and to the city for some time. So I just wanted to come back and bring the picture, because I don't know that I explained it properly. I appreciate your time and happy to answer any questions.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Vaz. Councilmember Adams?
I really, I really appreciate you bringing this back so the public understands, you know, what's happening, and it's, I'm really supportive of it. So thank you for bringing it forward and educating our public. And I'm glad that we're still going to have parking there too for a while, because I know a lot of people park in that lot. So thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Braddo Savage?
Just really quick, Ms. Vaz, I just want to say thank you so much. I really do appreciate your willingness to work with us to complete our Veterans Memorial. I know we've been working on it for a while, and it's just, a lot of it's kind of independent on who that neighbor is going to be, and so we're excited that it's you, and we're looking forward to creating like something really remarkable on that abutment road. I think it's going to be great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any members of the public wish to speak on this item this evening? Madam Clerk, any requests to speak virtually?
No requests for this item, Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. I'll close the public hearing. Council, any further comments or discussion? It's been moved by Vice Mayor Keating and seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And Councilmember, oh, there we go. And Councilmember, oh, there we go. And that item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 7C5, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 20, Noise of the Tempe City, Tempe City Code, removing all references of decibel and decibel measurement. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any requests to speak?
No input for this item, Mayor.
Sounds good. I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Keating and seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Keating?
Aye.
Oh, there it is. And that item also passes seven to zero. Next up, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I'm going to call on council members for their comments. Councilmember Adams, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, just want to remind everyone that Election Day is this Tuesday, March 8. And you cannot guarantee, if you mail your ballots back now, that they'll be counted. So what you can do is drop off your ballots and at the city clerk's office from 8 to 5. That would be tomorrow and Monday and Tuesday. And also, if you want to go to, by the Tempe Library, it's at the Tempe Museum, you can drop off your ballots from 8 to 5 on Friday and Monday, and then longer hours on Tuesday, since it is Election Day, from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And a few more announcements. I want to wish everyone a Happy St. Patrick's Day, which is Thursday, March 17. And I just want to wish you, everyone, a Happy St. Patty's Day. And I won't go into a lot of details about how great it is for U.S. tradition, also with our friends in Ireland. I do have a statement that I want to read regarding Ukraine. While we are talking about our traditions and friends from across the Atlantic, I wanted to just say a few words about the situation with Ukraine. Tempe has a few sister cities in Europe, and the Sister Cities Program allows all of us who are touched by that program to connect with people around the world. The Sister Cities Program humanizes people from other countries and cultures. It helps us to understand that we have so much in common despite the borders that divide us. What is going on right now in Ukraine is very alarming to everyone across the European continent. And Russia's unprovoked aggression should be alarming to supporters of democracy from all around the world. I am proud that Tempe City Hall shines blue and yellow lights from its rooftop tonight in support of the people of Ukraine. And I hope the city will be ready to provide support for any refugees from Ukraine that may arrive at Tempe's doorstep. I wore my yellow and blue shirt tonight in honor of Ukraine's, Ukrainians around the world. And I will keep you in my thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, Councilmember Aradondo Savage.
That's me. Okay.
That's you.
Um, I'll go. Okay, couple things. Career with Tempe is you are a student and you are looking for some employment opportunities. This is a great way to do it. And also businesses. If there is a local business that is looking to educate some of our future workers, whether it's not just in hard skills, but also soft skills, this is a really great opportunity to get involved and to really help mold the future of our workforce. So if you are interested, please reach out to us. We would love to get you involved. Now, the second one we have here is for boots and badges, I think, for the Hundred Club. Yep, right. All right, very cool. So the Hundred Club, as everybody may know, has a fundraiser. Unfortunately, though, their fundraiser, due to COVID, this is going to be the first year that it is actually coming back, and it's going to be live. And, and their mission is to provide financial assistance to families of first responders who are either injured or unfortunately killed in the line of duty. So these individuals do so much good for our first responders' families when there's any type of crisis. So April 2nd, 2022, 6:00 p.m. at South Mountain. Light Up the Night, I think is going to be really fun with Hot Air Blue Rides. I think they're going all crazy here. Cigar Rolling, which I heard something about the mayor and cigars at one time. I've heard the story about that. Flaming Croisines, and just a lot of fun. So if you like to support our first responders, this is a really great way to do it. And just go ahead and check into hundredclub.org, and you can learn a little bit more about that. And so lastly, the one thing I really want to take a quick second to do and tell everybody, it is Timmy G.'s last day. And thanks to some friends, and especially Jason Wolf over here, who obviously has some of the same passions as Timmy G. does. So Tim Gomez, for some of you may not know. And I just want to, can't thank you enough, Timmy G. It's been a great two and a half years. And I went and looked at some of the great movie quotes, right, that I thought you could appreciate. And so this is what I came up with. No mistakes, okay, though we've had a few mistakes. No do-overs, quite a few do-overs, we've done those, right, too. Look out for each other, which I think we've always done, and you've always done for me, and I've certainly definitely have appreciated that. This is the fight of our lives, right? So who said it first, Timmy G.? Who said it? Steve Rogers. Thank you. All right. I was going to be so disappointed as, you know, he got, as Tim got here, it was about maybe six months into his tenure, and then the pandemic happened. And so basically, it's always really hard to build relationships and get to know people when you're working remotely. And I think we've all known that and felt that. But, you know, one of the things I think's been great with Tim is he's worked really, really hard to build those relationships and proactively went out. And not only we created a relationship together, but I know that you've been able to create a relationship and really truly make a difference in so many other people's lives. And even though I know you're going to ASU, which is great, you know, being a Sun Devil myself, I know you're like a 50-time Sun Devil. I don't know how many degrees you have, but I think it's going to be a really great place for you to be to just really enhance our partnership with Arizona State University. I know we already have a great one, but I think you being the representative there is going to be really fantastic. So I, I'm very happy for you. I will promise not to call you a quitter anymore. And I will say this, that I think Tony Stark said it best, when he said, "Part of the journey is the end." So maybe it's not necessarily the end in the sense of our friendship and what you're able to do in the partnership with ASU, but I just want you to know, it's been a really awesome journey. And you've made me a better council member, and I know you've done so many great things for this organization and for this community. So you will be missed. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Aradondo Savage. Next up, Councilmember Carlin.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'd just add to that. Tim, I loved working with you. I love seeing your smiling face every time I come into the office and your Lego tower that's in there. I'm really going to miss that. But I appreciate working with somebody who is so busy as you are, when we're doing something for the Human Safety and Community, Human Services and Community Safety Committee that we have, that I ask you a question, I know you're busy, and you always say, "Don't worry, I got it, I got it, I got it." And I love that, because you did, and you do. So I'm going to miss you. I've told you already, I'm mad at you for leaving, but good for you. Congratulations. Okay, so the first thing I want to talk about is last night, we had my first, I know some people, some of the council members do coffee talks. I started, wanted to do something a little bit different, so it's called the Backstage Pass, and we were at TCA last night. It was so much fun to be there and to get that backstage tour of the stage. And the architect and designers were there, and so they were offering lots of background information on how the building was built. And, and there's actually one architectural flaw. And you might know that story someday, but I'm not going to tell it to you here. But it was really fun for them to be able to share that information with us. Just want to let you know that the next one that we're going to be doing, going, getting a backstage pass for is we're going, I think we're looking into going to the courts. Judge Kane said that he would love for us to come and have him give us a tour and talk about the courts and how the city of Tempe courts work. That'll be in May. And then we're going to be asking people if they can give us any other suggestions on places they want to see backstage or get a special pass for in the city of Tempe. So if you have any ideas, email them to me. This morning, I've already got six different ideas.
That lets us all freak out back there, you know? So there she is. You're going to need to talk to her over the courts.
All right. I got you, girl. Okay, so the next slide. That's, we, Tempe's Empty Bowls. And I know when I got there, I was told by Mr. Abbott came up to me, and he said, "I'm sure glad you got here, because the mayor was trying to take all the Cobalt Blue Bowls, and that's what I wanted." I was able to get three, but it was a lot of fun to be there. And I just want to say that, you know, Tempe Empty Bowls, the committee, the original committee, this is their 20th year that they were doing this. In those, in that 20 years, they raised over $290,000. And next year, their, the money all goes to the United Food Bank and to Tempe Community Action Agency, which I just think is such a special thing to be able to do. And Walt Richardson always plays, and he was awesome. Next year, it's no longer going to be the original committee. The new group that'll be taking over is the Tempe Community Action Agency Emerging Leaders Committee. They will be taking over. They have some new ideas, and they're really excited about doing this next year. All right. And the last slide. Joe Spockelli is turning 90 tomorrow. So if you see him, if you have his email, if you have his phone, call him and let him know. Tell him happy birthday. It's going to be a pretty big day. I got to know Joe, being on the Thai Foundation, the Tempe Impacts Education Foundation Board. He is a lot of fun to work with. And this man, I think his whole entire life has been revolving around doing what's best for kids in Tempe. And he is an amazing man. So I just want to wish him happy birthday. Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Carlin. Next up, Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you very much, Mayor. You know, Tim, Robin's nicer than I am. This, this is the end of our friendship. So, you know, it's unfortunate it has to end this way so publicly, but it's not the worst relationship I ever had, and publicly. So, you know, on your way out the door, don't let it hit you. But honestly, it's been, it's been great working with you, man. Congratulations to you. You know, you've certainly done a great job here at City Hall, and you will be missed for sure. And I can say, I've never had a member of city staff troll me on Twitter before, but you did certainly quite a bit. And, you know, rightfully so. I mean, I'm a Lions fan. I deserve to be mocked. And so, you know, no one's, no one's blaming you for that, though it does upset me every single time, I assure you. Anyway, good luck to you, Tim. Looking forward to, you know, seeing you again, as I will say. I'd also like to wish everyone a Saint Patrick's Day. Happy Saint, Happy Saint Patrick's Day. Stop it, I'm trying to get my announcements. Well, just everyone else, a Happy Saint Patrick's Day, as well, as an Irish-American, Joel. Happy Saint Patrick's Day. I hope you all celebrate in the tradition of my people, but do so responsibly. And I will give you a pro tip, that green beer also turns your teeth green. I'm not sure if you guys knew that. I learned that the hard way. So make sure you bring a toothbrush with you as well, should you celebrate Saint Patrick's Day. And also, I'd echo Councilmember Adams', is, you know, support for the people of Ukraine, what they must be going through right now. Obviously, none of us in this country have ever had to deal with anything like that. And it's shocking to see it. I've been glued to CNN every day, all day. And, you know, certainly, my heart goes out to them. And I know I'm very proud of the city for lighting up City Hall and the Ukrainian flags colors. And it's the least we could do for, to stand in solidarity with people that, that share our values. So, you know, my heart goes out to the people of Ukraine, especially the refugees now, and the brave men and women who have stayed and are putting up fierce resistance to defend their, their home country and their freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Councilmember QB?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Keating, Councilmember Adams, you both speak so eloquently about Ukraine, and my heart as well goes out to the Ukrainian people. And we're all Ukrainians today, tonight, tomorrow. We hope for safety and we just hope for peace. So, and Tim, congratulations on your new position with ASU. And I look forward to integrating you into the Global Futures Laboratory, so you can learn all the amazing things going on and impacting the world at ASU. So congratulations. And I wanted to also tell you about another leave-taking in our city, but Jonae Harrison is, is leaving. She's our diversity director, and she's leaving for a great opportunity. So it's bittersweet. We're very happy for her. But what an impact she's had on the city. When you think about the equal pay negotiation classes, she reinstituted that and got them going again. She's a big part of the Public Safety Task Force, the Right to Breathe, racial healing with, and all the workforce training that she did, and Equity in Action, implementing Equity in Action. And finally, I mean, there's so many things, and so many events she's led too, but Dolores Huerta Day, and the activism that has come from Dolores Huerta Day, and the scholarships, and the impacts on people's lives. So Jonae, we're going to miss you so much. You're not here in the audience, but I know you're probably watching at home, or watching another time, but care so much about you. And I'm so proud to have known you and all the work that you accomplished in the city. And next, connecting with QB, the Earth Day edition. Actually, it's Earth Month. Well, every day is Earth Day, right?
That's right.
It's Wednesday, April 13. We're not sure where it's going to be, because I'd like to have it in person. So details to come, but I hope to hear from residents about any of the concerns they may have about the city, any ideas, plans, visions they have for the city. And with that, I close. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any slides, Tim. Thanks. I know you're, you're excited to go to ASU. And, and you know what? This is great. Me and Robin got to share time with you, two and a half years. I've had a ton of fun with you. And you make the council, I think we've had conversations that I just enjoy. And you get me, and I get you, and it really kind of makes it fun. But you really helped me out, guiding through everything that we do here at the council. And I appreciate your time. I know the COVID crisis was probably not the council experience you had to go through for the majority of your time here. But we all kind of got on board, but you helped us guide us. And you definitely will be missed. But I know you're just feet's away, and I know we'll probably be talking very soon, just in a different position. So I will enjoy the conversations. That was a good down the road. So thank you so much for being my aide and Robin's aide. And we appreciate the time that you've served for us. So I appreciate that. And you are a great dad. You have two great kids. On top of that, Joe Spockelli, 90th. And I appreciate you bringing that up. Joe has been a figure here for Tempe for so many years. My, my mom was, or Joe was the principal at my mom's school. So many of you guys in the community have known Joe. I also know Joe as coach. He has affected so many lives in our community. And his, just his passion for not only being a council member here way back when, but just, he continues to be involved with the community. So definitely happy birthday to Joe, as he comes up to his 90th tomorrow. I know he probably doesn't want that, but at the same time, he's still looking good. He's a strong guy, and I just appreciate Joe. And then solidarity to Ukraine. I know it's been said over here, and I'm glad that our building has shined up to show that support. And that is it for me, Mayor.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. So just a few quick things. Just wanted to say also happy 90th birthday to Joe Spockelli, who's clearly a Tempe legend. One of my favorite things about Joe is, as I got to know him, every time I bump into Joe in public, the first thing he does is give, like he gives all of us, a huge bear hug. And he just, you know, hugs me and says, you know, "Hey, my son, how are you?" It's just good to see my son here. And it always makes me feel so good, just every time he says that, for a person who has obviously done so much for this community and so much for, for kids. The, the impact that he has had on young people in this community is seriously impossible to measure. And so I just wanted to say very publicly, happy 90th birthday to Joe. Wanted to, once again, congratulate Sonia Blaine on becoming our new city attorney. Just really excited about continuing to work with you, and congratulations. Tim, it's just, it's been great getting to know you over the last year and a half or so. And glad you're going to be able to keep that key to the city that you and I were wrestling over today. It's sort of an inside joke about a big Lego yellow key that Tim has. And so we had, we had a good time today. Uh-oh, what other?
I thought you were going to talk about his bowling game.
Oh, no, I was not going to talk about Tim's bowling game. So, but we could talk about that later. But Tim, it's just, it's been amazing to work with you. And I know you have a fantastic opportunity over at ASU, and as people set up here, it's, while we're going to be sad not to see you on the third floor anymore, we know that your presence at ASU is going to continue to help us strengthen that partnership and do even more collaboratively. So just, you know, thank you for all the hard work you've done on behalf of the council and on behalf of the city of Tempe, and congratulations on your new opportunity. And also, just lastly, to Jonae Harrison as well. I, you know, I think about when, you know, I first started as mayor, and the first sort of big initiative out of the gate was the Public Safety Advisory Task Force, which was, you know, a challenging sort of issue to tackle. But, you know, Jonae, along with, you know, Rosa and Chausti and Wydell Holmes, did such an excellent job and had to do it all virtually, given the fact that we were in the middle of a surging pandemic. It's very difficult to have those kinds of conversations that can be sometimes somewhat emotionally charged, when you can't meet in person and have the discussions. And so they did such an exceptional job, really facilitating really, like heartfelt, robust conversations with 22 people who chose to serve on that committee in a volunteer capacity, seven meetings, three hours apiece, and then follow-up afterwards. And we still continue to communicate with the folks who are on that task force. But Jonae, some of the work, and some of the work that she did, I know that, you know, Councilmember QB mentioned the other initiatives that she's been pivotal in, you know, equal pay, Equity in Action, you know, Right to Breathe. But I mean, I could just say, she's left a really incredible mark on this organization. And once again, she's leaving for a, another fabulous opportunity. So we definitely wish her well. But I just wanted to let her know publicly, I just really appreciate all of her hard work. I mean, I got to see it very up close and personal. And she's an absolute gem, and we really appreciate her. With that said, I will close council announcements. Please. Turn it off. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council this evening? And if so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record. No one in the audience. Madam Clerk, anyone else?
No additional input, Mayor.
All right. Then in that case, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 8:54 p.m. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here and for watching at home. Council, we still have an executive session. We need to finish upstairs.